Good evening, we will call to order the August 8, 2018, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the role to establish a quorum?
Sure. Good evening. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed, captioned, and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, August 12, at 4:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you very much. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to just make note that the vice chair is chairing this evening because the chair has recused herself due to potential conflicts, and if the chair is watching, I hope she's enjoying her evening.
Item number one is the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. It's a request to adopt the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, Sequa Findings of Fact, Aquatic Resources Program, Implementing Resolution, NEXA Study, and Authorization to Execute the Implementing Agreement. Also, you're introducing aquatic protection ordinance adding Chapter 16.135 through 16.135.110 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code, and continuing to a further date for adoption. Also, you are introducing the fee ordinance adding Chapter 22.45 through 22.45102 to Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code, and continuing to a later date for adoption. The environmental document is an environmental impact statement and environmental impact report.
Bless you. Thank you. With that, I will welcome Ms. Moffett up to the podium, and I believe we also have other speakers that will speak before we take public testimony.
Thank you very much. LeAnn Moffett, County Planning Director, here to kick the evening off. I am going to start the presentation, and then I will turn over much of the PowerPoint presentation to Bill Zebraugh, who is the Joint Project Manager on behalf of the various plan partners. We are all very pleased to be here tonight. It has been a long journey working on this project. I have not worked on it the entire time. It's been in preparation, but...
You were six.
No, actually, not quite. Thank you, though. But I have worked on it for quite a while, so I am so pleased to finally be here to hold this hearing tonight. The process started in the late '90s, but it really came together around 2012 when we finally got to the point, working with our federal partners and other stakeholders, where we really had a project that we felt could go forward and have all the work done. So that is the version of the project that you're going to see tonight. We have a large team who's worked onto this, a number of many individuals who aren't with us anymore. I do have to give a shout-out to Rich Brodmacher, who's been with on this plan for many, many years and is still helping us out, although not here tonight. I think there are a number of other stakeholders and developers who've been around since the beginning, but many people have come and gone. We do have two planned speakers tonight. We have Jennifer Norris, the Field Supervisor for the Sacramento Office of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and we have Mike Jewell, the Division Chief of the Sacramento District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We have a fairly large group of other team members sitting over in this area. We had contemplated having each of them give a two-hour PowerPoint presentation detailing all of their component of the plan and the seven binders that it took to take, but we thought maybe that wouldn't go over too well. So they are here as a resource to Bill and I. Bill Zebraugh and I will be trying to answer as many of the questions as we can, and we will go to them if absolutely needed. So just to, rather than having them each give a presentation, just to let you know who's here, we have Kim Hudson and Mary Ann Benet with Sacramento County Planning and Environmental Review. We have Mike Henry with DUDAC, who's been a consultant resource on both the plan and the EISEIR. Michelle Hullett, who's a partner with BBK Law. Ben Sigman with EPS, who worked on fiscal and NEXA study. Sean Becta with Ascent, who worked on the EISEIR. And our public outreach consultants, Gene Endicott and Michelle Smyra. We do also expect to have some of our plan partners in the audience. Elizabeth Sparkman from Rancho Cordova. Chris Arias and Mayor Lori Hewer from Galt. Derek Minima from the JPA Connector. And Steve Norris from Regional Sanitation. And then we also have Dylan Wood from State Fish and Wildlife, and Jan Knight from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So there's that. So the plan partners are listed on this slide. This is the group who have been working on and funding this project for many years now, Sacramento County, including the Water Agency, the City of Rancho Cordova, the City of Galt, Regional Sanitation, and the Capital Southeast Connector. We do use two terms, both "plan partners" and "plan permatees," and that can be a little confusing. The plan permatees are everybody on this slide except for Regional Sanitation, who would be getting their permits based on projects in the local jurisdiction. So there is a slight difference when we use those two very similar terms. The plan area is depicted here on this slide. It includes portions of unincorporated Sacramento County, portions of Rancho Cordova, and all of Galt, and it comprises a little over 317,000 acres inside of what we call the urban development area, which is the area that we would expect to see development during the life of the plan. There is 67,618 acres, and outside of the urban development, around 250,000 acres. The plan would anticipate impacts or urbanization to around 33,000 acres with a preserve size of around 36,000 acres. So those are some of the numbers that you'll see, some additional detail further on in the presentation. With regard to overview, we view this as a transformational change to how to streamlining federal and state permits for development and infrastructure in order to protect habitat, open space, and agricultural lands. It's a fundamental change from a species-take approach to a habitat-based approach. So basically, you're preserving habitat land types that can then support species, rather than looking at the critters on a one-on-one basis. Over a 50-year, the plan calls for the creation of a 36,282-acre interconnected preserve system with 1,000 acres of vernal pool habitat. It would be acquired from willing sellers only. There would be greater certainty, including with regard to things like mitigation ratios over the 50-year planning period. Modifications and amendments can be made, but those have to be done through a public process. And it also addresses two biological opinions and one memorandum of agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service related to water contracts, and it meets the county commitment to diligently pursue completion of the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan with related to water and the Freeport Water Facility. The components that we speak of are in your board report. They're detailed, the actions that we are asking you to take. On the left-hand side of the slide is a summary of those actions. We do not know if you're going to get to that point tonight. In fact, we suspect you may not get there tonight, but when you do, both planning staff and county council will be prepared to walk you through that. Yes?
Supervisor Natoli.
Just on that point, Mr. Chair, I think it's important from, you know, onset of the hearing, and certainly just on this piece, because obviously, it's not for LeAnn or any of the presenters determined if we're going to consider taking action this evening. I guess I would just want to say very clearly, very early on here, for the amount of time that it's taken to get this to our board, and certainly the amount of work and effort, and certainly the interest that this has generated over the course of more than two decades, I would hope, and maybe we can be clear about it, that the expectation would be that we're going to have a full hearing this evening, a full presentation, questions by this board, by members of the audience, comments as to either the, you know, the upsides of this or any downsides that people may see, that we take that in consideration, and it would be my expectation anyway, that we would then direct staff to either respond to those comments, get the additional information, and return to these chambers at a date in not-too-distant future, in a few weeks, if that's appropriate, come back and take up, you know, the remaining information that we request. And so I would just like to put that out very clearly, so that there's not any unrealized expectations here this evening that we're going to take any final action. We certainly may give direction, and that's a decision this board can make. I know there's interest, obviously, in having us move on this, but I think in light of what I've just said, and I think what we'll hear this evening, again, many comments and support, but also some concerns, and obviously, questions from this board members, that we would, I would hope, certainly through the chair and through the county executive and the planning department, that we would make that pretty clear this evening, and again, not to delay unduly or to not take action or contemplate taking action. I just think it's appropriate that we have a full public hearing, and I appreciate, I wanted to say lastly, I appreciate the fact that we've set this in the evening to accommodate folks' schedules, and certainly my colleagues' willingness, and those of the audience, obviously, to be here in an evening meeting, which is a bit unusual, but I think very important, because this is a very important topic.
I agree with all that. I don't want to presuppose where we're going at the end of this hearing until we had a chance to deliberate among the board. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in here, since Supervisor Natoli stated what he just did, that I don't necessarily disagree with, taking a little more time if necessary, also not presupposing the outcome following our deliberations and discussion this evening. However, I would respectfully ask my colleagues to, at least, if we get to a point where we all concur, there's going to be more time necessary to answer questions that need answering and/or for there to be a little last-minute staff work to be performed, that we leave all parties concerned, especially those that have been with this process from the beginning, some understanding of some time certainty in terms of, you know, a date when we would reconvene, if that's going to be the will of the board this evening, and some rationale behind the amount of time that we might think is necessary to, you know, use in the interim between tonight and perhaps a second meeting.
Thank you. Please continue.
All right. Well, that actually is right about the breaking point of where I'm ending my portion of the presentation. And so on the right-hand slide is the federal and state actions, and I'm going to turn the remainder of the PowerPoint over to Bill Zebraugh.
LeAnn?
Yes.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I meant to ask this when you had the map up there. I don't know if you can get it back.
Certainly.
Just a question of general interest here. Why does, I'm just curious, why does the boundary include an unincorporated community like South Oak Park, but excludes a community like Rancho Marietta?
I actually do not know why...
Maybe that's a good segue for Bill to...
Rancho Marietta was excluded. I think it's been out for many, many years, and, you know, whoever was working on the plan way back when, it was carved out. We do think that the habitat types there, which are more oak tree-based, were not a key habitat type that the HCP was focusing on. It was focusing more on vernal pools. Clearly, it's not like there's vernal pools in South Oak Park either, so...
Sure.
I think we just threw in the rest of the county and likely figured that any projects in Rancho Marietta would mitigate on their own. I do not have a great answer, and I don't know that any of us on the team actually know the origin of why that was carved out.
So in terms of what we just, both Supervisor Natoli and I just stated, in terms of the prospect of there being more time possibly to answer questions, that might be a good one to have answered, because at some point, I may be asked, why is the southerly part of your very urbanized district in the HCP? And when you look, squint and look at the map, you've got other places that you would think, just anecdotally, may have some greater habitat value. They may be less dense, they may be less urban in character, and why they're excluded. And it's not, it's not to open up a debate about the merits of why, but I just want to have a good explanation, and if it's a process one, it's a process one, but if there is a practical reason, I'd like to understand it.
Yeah, clearly. We tried to cover as much as possible, and way back when, there was a decision to take Rancho, to not include Rancho Marietta expressly.
Supervisor Natoli.
Just a question. LeAnn, once Bill completes his portion of the presentation, I trust then you and he and other members of staff will be available for questions from the board. I mean, I want to let you get through the presentation, and obviously, we want to hear from the audience this evening, but having had a chance to go through portions of a document I want to ask some questions about. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you very much, LeAnn, Chair Kennedy, and members of the board. It's a distinct pleasure to be at this point and be in front of you tonight to talk further about the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. I've been honored to have served in this role as a consulting program manager for the last five years, and I think it's, suffice it to say, it's been a tremendous amount of effort and work across the board, team effort, to get us to this point. I think LeAnn has touched on all the members of the team, the staff, the consulting team who've worked on it. I'd also like to underscore that they've done great work, in my opinion, plus the outreach to the stakeholder community, in my opinion, has been unprecedented. I've been in this business for many, many years in California, many major plans and studies throughout the state, as well as in this region, and I think that's to be lauded, the work that the staff has done in terms of reaching out to the stakeholders. So I want to kind of fast-forward here, back up to where we were in the slide presentation, and talk to you, kind of take it from where LeAnn left off with the local actions that would be taken at some point, and talk about the federal and state actions. It's almost, in a way, like, from a private sector term, like a vertical integration. I mean, we've, we also integrate all the way up through all levels of government on this process, on this project, and I think that's something that's tremendously unique, both at the federal and state level and regional level, as well as kind of horizontally across the board with our stakeholder teams. So just a real quick summary of the actions that would be taken at the federal and state level, and we have Mike Jewell here tonight and Jennifer Norris, who can clarify anything there, but following the actions that this board may take and the other plan partners, there will be a biological opinion that will be prepared by the Fish and Wildlife Service that will cover their action, both their own permit, as well as a separate action that the Corps of Engineers will take for their permit strategy. Both of those federal agencies will also issue records of decision that will document the findings that they make with regard to the permit actions. Then, actually going down, that 50-year federal and state ESA permits should actually almost be the last item here, but that will be the end state here, is that we get a federal Endangered Species Act permit from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, as well as from the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. Supporting that is a program that the Corps of Engineers has been working closely with us on to provide coverage for 404 purposes, Clean Water Act 404, and there will be an in-loo fee program that will need to also be accepted and adopted. We're working very hard on that with them right now as we speak, as well as the adoption of their permit strategy and issuance. I'll talk a little bit more about the breakdown of how that will work. And then finally, supporting that will be some regional board certification we hope to get on 401, water quality certification that the Corps needs to reach out on, and then Section 106 programmatic agreement. All of those things with respect to historical resources, all of those things will be part of that whole package with the Corps of Engineers. Okay, moving forward here, the main sort of strategy of this is that comprehensive is better, large-scale is better, a coordinated biological program that establishes goals and objectives is better than the kind of piecemeal mitigation that we get today, project by project. And so our plan really encompasses sound principles of biological conservation in terms of these measures, looking for larger blocks of habitat interconnected, many away from the large urbanizing areas, arranged by planning units within our plan area, and then also, the plan is based on a pre-negotiated set of preserves that have been established within our urban development area, within five major master plans that are in process or already down the road in terms of permitting. So the theory here is that it's better for the communities, the natural communities, better for the species, and kind of minimizes the effects that you get from this piecemeal approach. This slide kind of shows all the species, and as LeAnn mentioned, we're taking a habitat-based approach, so it's kind of more bang for your buck, if you will, by looking at habitats that these species occupy, rather than species by species. So there's 28 total species. Eleven of them, 11 of them are listed as state or federally threatened or endangered, and the idea here, again, is that you protect all of them in these kind of suites of conservation, rather than going at it project by project, and they range from the aquatic species, the invertebrates, the little microscopic species, all the way up to, if you will, the more majestic species like the greater sandhill crane. So it really covers the bases of all the listed species, as well as ones that may come in the future. I mentioned the Army Corps of Engineers permit process. This is what's truly unique about this plan. We are combining not just, not just going for the 50-year Endangered Species Act permit, but also for a set of permits from the Corps of Engineers that will provide kind of coordinated coverage, aligned coverage, for both of those requirements, under the covering as well the Clean Water Act. And there's a kind of graduated set of permits that the strategy points out. The local entities will hold a programmatic permit, 404 permit, that will allow us to mitigate, actually, permit projects at up to about two acres, with some exceptions for the Amaythor core recovery area, it's 1.5, and then a streamlined process for larger projects. The Corps will still be holding those permits, but if they come through our process and vet through and incorporate all of our measures and conditions, that process should be extremely streamlined for the regulated community. And then, as key, this all links back to the local land use entitlement process. So we have local land use entitlement, endangered species, as well as protection of aquatic resources in one package, and that is an unprecedented thing to say. It's not been done anywhere at this scale, to my knowledge, throughout the country, so we are really on the cutting edge, I think, of providing a program that will be better for the stakeholders across the board. We've been at this for a long time, and over the last couple of years especially, have been focused on implementation, getting ready to implement once a decision is made, if the permits are issued. The implementing entity, the South Sacramento Conservation Agency Joint Powers Authority, was created in late 2016. That organization, and I want to stop for a minute and just explain how that's structured. It's made up of a governing board, of which you currently have three members. The City of Rancho Cordova has two members, and the City of Galt has one member. So there are six members of the governing board. The role of that entity is to select an executive director to run the program in the longer term, prepare all of the annual reports and budgets and the like, adopt the mitigation fee. There will be a mitigation fee that will be part of this process to pay for the conservation, and then also importantly, to make final approvals on the conservation easements that are proposed. So that's kind of the purview of the governing board. There are two other committees I want to mention, they're very important. One is an implementation committee, and one is a technical advisory committee. First, on the technical advisory committee, that's where a lot of the work will go on, looking at the proposed preserves that are put up, or the possible conservation easements that are proposed by willing sellers. It will be made up of the local plan partners, the regulatory agencies, and then stakeholders. We will be inviting stakeholders from each of the major groups, the agricultural landowner groups, the development groups, as well as the environmental groups. That committee will play a very important role in kind of evaluating the proposals that come before us in terms of how they meet the goals and criteria of the HCP. Other related biological focus there as well. Then the implementation committee will be working probably more on a monthly basis or bimonthly basis, as it's proposed right now, made up of the local plan partners, the permatees, the partners, I should say. The executive director, again, will be running that, and they will be receiving those those recommendations from the TAC that will be forwarded to the board on the conservation side, but also doing more than that, looking at fee recommendations, the budget, helping to evaluate projects as they come forward to the local plan entities, incorporation of the avoidance and minimization measures, all those things that have to happen to make this plan sound, and make sure that it does meet the goals that have been set out. So that's how the entity is organized right now. I just wanted to point that out. It's been in place, you made your appointments, and I'm happy to answer questions later on that. Going forward, we have also been working with early willing sellers of easements. We have actually brought, I think, four fee agreements now, before your board, mitigation fee agreements, which basically have said, prior to when the HCP is adopted, if these developments are willing to pay the mitigation fees under our plan, that we can pool that money and go out and look for easements at an early stage, because we have something called a jumpstart provision. We need to get conservation in the ground before the plan is actually permitted. So that has been tremendously helpful. The connector is one of them, South Gate Park and Rec, Ogden Ranch, and then the North Douglas Road project, and we have actually taken some of that money and already done a conservation easement purchase at one of the major ranches in the southeastern part of the county. We are negotiating on another major one and have proposals from another two or three to move forward. So we're excited about that. One of the things I've learned in doing this work over the last five years and talking to other entities that have plans in place, is that that's a real big challenge, is getting out in front, and some of the plans have not been out in front and are playing catch-up the whole time. Well, we've worked very hard to avoid that. The other component, as I mentioned, is the dedication of large preserves within some of the master plan areas, within the urban development area. That is, we call those hardline preserves, that's cast, those are cast in stone as soon as, if and when the plan is adopted and permitted. And then, obviously, incorporation of all the conditions from the plan going forward. There are several projects lining up that staff is working on right now, not just here, but in Rancho Cordova and Galt and so forth. So that's the work that's been going on in terms of early implementation in the last couple of years. The financing, I want to just cover this in a brief way. It's very important to understand that the plan that we put together is founded on conformance with the Mitigation Fee Act, State of California. We've had various comments along the way, some claiming, well, it's really a tax. It's not a tax. It's in full conformance with the Mitigation Fee Act. There are provisions in the state tax code that exempt land dedication, mitigation fees on land projects, land development projects, fully in line with that. It also covers a very important part of the core permitting process, which is establishment and acceptance of an in-lu fee. So that covers their role, their authority to issue permits ultimately for, like I said, the programmatic permit and so forth, for the restoration that occurs. So we have preservation and restoration. We have a comprehensive fee program that covers both sides of the equation. So overall, I think, as much as, and some of the fees are very competitive compared to what you're paying on the open market today. Others are maybe a little bit more than what you're paying on the open market today, but the key benefit is certainty, knowing what those fees are, and having a kind of a path to that end game, where you can collect the fee, get the permit, make the acquisition, and go forward. So it's been a long haul. This just kind of...
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, just as I could, back to that slide. So the dollar figure wasn't put on your slide here, but the information that was included in our packet was using $2,015. That just contemplates about $767 million over the 50-year...
Over the 50-year period, yes.
And does it also contemplate, I mean, that's the planned period of time which the permit would cover, but the conservation easements and/or the fee title holdings would be in perpetuity? So what's contemplated, is it contemplated that there's an endowment that should the...
There is, yes.
Should the permit expire? So just take a moment, if you could.
Yeah, sure, sure. I didn't, yeah. There's a whole, and I could bring out the whole...
Yeah, I don't need the whole matrix, just how that works.
Many, many different elements, but there is an endowment, a non-wasting endowment that that fee contributes to over time. That's not touched until we get to the end of the 50-year period. It builds up interest over time. It's invested at a certain capitalization rate, and that will be the fund that will be available at the end of the 50-year period to keep preserves operating in perpetuity.
I see. Okay, thanks.
So Leanne talked a little bit about the process. I mean, I've been at it five years. That's only a fraction of the time that we've been at this. It's been a long haul, lots of things that have gone on earlier and then before my time, but she mentioned, you know, the 2012 period being a key milestone. There was an agreement with the agencies over the approach to conservation, and then I joined in 2013. We got some additional funding from the federal government, HCP grant, and then continued contributions from the local partners. But then that set in motion lots of work to prepare initial drafts, a stakeholder draft, an administrative draft, leading to the full public review drafts, which were issued last summer, last June, June 5 of 2017. A 90-day public review occurred. The SEQA-NIPA document was commented on, and then we proceeded to respond to those comments, and then proceeded to the final hearing process. So tremendous amount of work, tremendous amount of outreach. Speaking of that, I would say that since I've been engaged, there have been at least 75 meetings at, no, let me scratch. I would say since, say, 2016, when we led up to that first full administrative draft and then the draft, at least 75 meetings in the community, and that doesn't count all the individual groups that we've met with on and off for a long, long period of time. As I mentioned, there was a 90-day public review period. We had 18 workshops throughout the South County, met with all the CPACs in the plan area, six of the CPACs, all the major interest groups, several more than once, community workshops, and then dozens of meetings since that time, taking it to the CPACs for their final recommendations late last year and early this year, and the Planning Commission here, as well as the Planning Commission in Galt, Environmental Commission, several other groups. So it's been amazing, I think, in terms of the outreach that we've done to reach as many parties as we could. So some of the questions, I just want to highlight some of the things we've heard along the way, in terms of questions from stakeholders and others. The rationale for the 50-year permit period, why 50 years? Why that length of time? Well, there's several things. One of the key things is that the plan partners really felt it was very important to have that length of time, to get the assurances, the no surprises, essentially meaning that the rules of the game will not change in terms of mitigation, which they can over time, depending upon how the law is being interpreted and so forth, but this casts in stone what the rules of the game are. So that's very, very important for the plan permatees, as well as for, I'm sure, many of the stakeholders. It's also very important to have that amount of time to allow the preserve system to be built out, to collect the fees, to have the revenues available, to demonstrate the financial feasibility that we need to demonstrate in order to obtain the permits. So it has that benefit, as well as the benefit of allowing that amount of time to actually develop the preserve system. Is there a process for modifying the plan over time? Certainly. It is, there's several levels of modifications that can occur, from administrative, small-scale, that almost ministerial in nature, to minor modifications, to major amendments to the plan. Major amendment to the plan is a challenge, but it can happen, but there's a process that's defined in the HCP that spells all of that out. Question about the easements. This is a really key one. Will they result in more restrictions to agricultural operations than current mitigation easements require? The answer is no. These are basically the same template of easements that exist today. And so, given that it's a willing seller, free-market transaction, there's really no impact from what is occurring today. And I think you hear, the HCP is going to kind of restrict agriculture. Well, the HCP is not going to restrict agriculture at all. The easements will have some restrictions with those who wish to purchase them, but it does not prevent agriculture. In fact, we need agriculture to thrive, and that includes the rangelands to support the species that we wish to protect. Is the participation voluntary? I've talked about the easement. That's all on the voluntary side. It will be a requirement under the ordinances that are required to adopt, including the Aquatic Resources Protection Ordinance, which underlies the permit strategy, to mitigate through the plan, to come in through the plan, rather than through other means, individual means, right now. And we think the benefits of it far outweigh going alone at this stage. So that part of it will be required by the ordinance, the implementing resolution, as well as the mitigation fee ordinance, et cetera, Aquatic Resource Protection Ordinance. And then we've had questions about more reporting on what's in the reporting requirements. We are required to report annually, both on the progress in the plan, in terms of the fee, and three years, in 20 years, there's plenty of work there that will be done on an ongoing basis, and then also for land acquisition and fiscal accountability. We'll be looking at those fees annually. We'll be conducting full audits every three years to assure that they're keeping pace, and adjustments will need to be made, if necessary, to respond to changing market conditions. One other question I'll just mention, and I want to, this kind of sets up one other set of discussion items I want to bring, is we've had questions from mitigation bankers. What is their role in this? Can they participate? And the answer is yes. We can buy credits from banks. We actually have a proposal from a bank right now to work on a restoration site, so we hope to be able to accommodate those programs out there. And I will say this, in terms of what hasn't been mentioned yet, is one of the things about this plan is it kind of eases some of the restrictions that we have around the Mayfair Core recovery area. There are very, very few opportunities to mitigate any more in the Mayfair Core area. That's the Core Recovery Area. There are two in this area, Mayfair Core and then out in Casumnas Rancho Seco, set up to protect the aquatic vernal pool species. Without this plan, without the comprehensive nature of it, the Fish and Wildlife Service and the Corps don't look as kindly upon mitigating outside that core. You have to find those places within the Core. This plan provides relaxation to some extent, as long as we're meeting the criteria in the plan. This slide kind of gets to another topic. It sort of sets up, we've had questions about the impact on agricultural inventory in the county, in the South County, and this slide is the first slide. It just shows our plan area, of course, urban development area, the entire area, but also in green, the existing preserves, you know, from the Stone Lakes to Casumnas to Howard Ranch in the east, southeast, and other big preserves that are out there. So I just wanted to set that up first, because I want to go to this slide and then sort of talk through, what is the impact on agricultural lands? And, you know, there's been a lot said about that topic. Some information quoted about, well, we're going to take 80% of our lands, future agricultural lands, out of production. I think the slide demonstrates that's an extreme overexaggeration, and very much of an extreme exaggeration, overexaggeration. The plan area, 317,655 acres. We have ag lands, when I say ag, I mean cultivated agriculture, as well as rangelands, together. In the total area, about 239,000 acres, but then looking outside of the urban development area, the rural parts of the county, is about 197,000 acres of that land. The available ag inventory outside the UDA is, I'm sorry, just let me, I skipped one slide. The ag land, the slide I showed previously on the, that shows the green, that totals 47,000 acres. So we take that out of the equation, that's already preserved, subtract that from the ag outside the UDA, and then the remainder is what is the inventory, roughly 150,000 acres. Our plan, after 50 years, would seek conservation easements on 26,664 acres, remaining, with a remainder of 123,000 acres and change, if you will, that are not in any sorts of easements. That's about 18% of the inventory. So I just wanted to...
Supervisor Stern has a question, I believe.
Yes, yes, sir.
Just before you leave the map part of your presentation, Bill, I just wanted to see if you had an answer to the question I had earlier about...
Oh, yeah. I don't. I'm sorry. I think, Leanne, the partial answer is the habitat type. It's not very much of a targeted habitat type. The vernal pools aren't as prevalent in the Rancho Miurita area. Beyond that, again, it was several years before I came on board, and we've been trying to pull, even Rich Rodmacher couldn't answer that.
Maybe Don Natale knows.
I don't know. I don't know. Don, we've talked about this. Yeah, I don't...
Well, I'm just, this is not leading anywhere, other than just wanting to understand the geography here, and especially when you put it together with the, if you go back a slide, you'll look at, you'll see the key to the map.
Sure, yeah.
And there's no, there's no, was it Preserve Planning Unit assigned to the area shared with Supervisor Kennedy and I, and for me, the south part of District 1, and for Supervisor Kennedy, the eastern part of District 2 there, the urbanized part, and I'm just trying to understand what the polygons mean, what the line work means, what the labeling means.
Yeah. Well, the crosshatched area is the urban development area, as you can see. The red line is the urban development area boundary, which...
For instance, I don't see anything roughly west of Wad Avenue that has a Preserve Planning Unit number assigned to it.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I will have to look at that. I really will. We will answer that question, yeah.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to conclude. I mean, that's the data. This is data that was collected, most current data that we have, on the ag inventory. And again, I want to emphasize, even the amount of conservation easement land that we're seeking, we want, it's very important that that stay in productive agriculture. There are some restrictions, but it is important to support the species of interest for this project. So going further into...
Supervisor Natale.
Yes, please.
If you go back to the map, there, the numbers there, Bill, and I'll get into this with questions after you finish your full presentation, but I just, there you show 47,000 acres of conserve land, and maybe it's the ag land that's the key there, but in the chart, in Chapter 7, page 65, it shows about 54,000 acres of land in the, in Planning Units 6 and 7, which are predominantly the Casumnas in the eastern part of the county. So I don't know how that comportes. I mean, those are all agricultural lands along the rivers and so forth. So what's the difference, what's that almost 10,000-acre difference?
Between the ag land with, I'm sorry, I...
Well, you got a chart that shows existing preserve acreage accounted for outside the urban development area in your Preserve Planning Units, and so I just took 6 and 7, which are the ones that, you know, the Casumnas and certainly Rancho Seco, and by the math that I have, it's about 54,000 acres versus the 47,000.
It could be, is it, is the title, is ag land...
Well, it doesn't say, that's what I'm saying.
I believe it's the difference, the non-ag land, probably riparian and other habitat types. I would have to, yeah.
Okay, okay. So it would be count other things, and there's all the preserve lands that would be counted. And just for, as you're finishing your presentation, I want to come back to you, but I want to ask the question I know I've asked it over the years in previous workshops, but when we have basically total preservation acreage right now, existing, about 61,000, both in the UDA and outside the UDA, and we get credit for none of that in the context of this plan, we talk about scattered sites, and I look at that map along the Casumnas, or I look along the eastern perimeter of the county, or I see Deer Creek Hills, there, yeah, there's some separation in smaller sites, but, and again, for the regulatory agencies that are in the room, we're not going to change where we are this evening because of this comment, but it seems to me, when we already have an existing preserve system largely in the southern part of the county, in the areas that are agriculturally titled, cultivated. in the areas that are agriculturally tilled or cultivated, may have some variety of other uses, we get 61,000 acres, and we get almost 62,000, we get no credit for that in this plan. And maybe there's, again, you can offer an explanation, but that just always seemed odd to me, that for all that's been conserved, you know, and maybe it serves as the baseline, the backdrop for what we're going to have to do in the future going forward under the plan, but there's been a heck of a lot done. And again, certainly, there's been many partners in this rooms, developers obviously have acquired a lot of that, there's been public entities, there's been grants, there's been private conservancies, and farmers and ranchers and other landowners who have conserved their lands as well. And we get zero credit in the plan, as I understand it. Maybe you can elaborate on that. Just, again, it's very odd to me.
Well, it is a requirement for the new impacts to mitigate for their impacts. And so it would be hard to know how that, you know, existing reserve lands would be able to be credited.
Right.
Okay, and so, that said, you know, a couple of the things I can say about the plan is it does encourage linkages to those areas.
Right, interconnection, yeah, that's explained, and I got some basis.
I think in a way, and perhaps, you know, our friends here from Fish and Wildlife could elaborate more, but I think we do get some credit. Because this plan, because it's comprehensive in nature, and it looks at this large-scale approach linking to those preserves, our mitigation ratios are lower.
It affects the ratio. That's why I was asking the question.
Our mitigation ratios are going to be lower, yes, than project by project. And so that is where the credit comes in.
Yeah, because that's a pretty good jumpstart. I know you talk about jumpstart and keep ahead provisions in here, but that's a pretty good jumpstart for, you know, folks over the course of 30 years now.
It is, it is. But there will be, there is credit there. I want to, it's, you have to dig into the details of how that works out, but dig into the mitigation ratios, and you can look at it.
So it does count for something, it just doesn't count in the context of what future development and/or covered projects would be permitted, so.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Landowner assurances, I just wanted to cover this, very important slide. We've been, as I said, doing a lot of outreach, talking to the landowners, talking to the Farm Bureau, talking to various CPACs, individual meetings with landowners throughout the process. And we've listened, we've really listened to what's important, in my opinion. And so this slide represents some of the outcome of that. First and foremost, this is a free market situation. And that doesn't, that doesn't change from what exists today. Free market transactions, no use of eminent domain, you know, that's kind of the game. It's written into all the plans, it's written into the JPA agreement that you have, et cetera. A second key point here is that, and I've had this question from various landowners, both inside, actually outside the urban development area, what does it mean about future zoning change requests? Even though I'm not zoned for urban right now, maybe I want to come in down the road. Has no effect on that at all. That's a completely separate effort. If a landowner wishes to do that, fully able to apply, and then able to, excuse me, mitigate separately individually through the existing laws. Just that we wouldn't cover that, okay? So no effect. A good neighbor program, this is something that doesn't exist in the form that we have proposed it. We've actually been talking a lot to San Joaquin County, who's had a plan in place for about 15 years. They have a good neighbor program. We're trying to mirror what they're doing down there as closely as we can. And essentially, what it is, is if there is a proposed preserve in a certain area, landowner has approached us about selling a conservation easement, all the landowners within a half a mile of that preserve will be notified in writing that this is underway. They will also be given an opportunity to not only comment publicly, but also participate if they are interested in good neighbor protection. And that protection essentially says that should, down the road, species from that preserve wind up on their properties that, they weren't there in the past, they would have to take coverage against the possible incidental loss of those species from their normal agricultural operations. So it's an added benefit that exists in the plan. San Joaquin has actually introduced it, and they are, I think they said they have eight or 10 or so in place right now. So I think we believe that's an additional benefit. I mentioned the notification. Most of these preserves are going to remain in private ownership. As I said, it's virtually all easements, many, 85, 90% easements in working agriculture. The easements we have right now in place, we're working with the existing ranchers to continue their operations on the property. We have been in discussions with the California Rangeland Trust. In fact, I just spoke to them today, and they authorized me to say this, that we are, we have agreed on a partnership to work with them to potentially hold our easements in the future. They hold over 400,000 acres in easement throughout the state of California.
I believe Director Frost has a question.
Yes.
I'm a little confused, Bill, about the species. You said the rules cannot change, so, and I know we, over these, over this time period, we've tried to identify as many species as possible, anticipating what we might have. Or are the 28, are the 28 species what we do have, or what we think we might have? And then later, if, say, they come up with some other species that needs to be protected, can that potentially impact those that have already sold an easement on their property and impact their farming?
No, it wouldn't. I mean, the easement will hold, it will keep, you know, whatever, whatever conditions are on that easement will stay in place. We don't change the easement.
But for the overall HCP, it could change the overall HCP?
Well, I mean, that could be something, that could be a change in the plan, if there were a new species, but I can tell you, there's a tremendous amount of work that's been done on these species over the years. A lot of it predating when I came on board. I think it started out with a list of 90, winnowing down, winnowing down. Some of these are extremely rare. Some of the plants are very, very rare, found only here. We don't think there's going to be, and as I said, 11 of them are listed, the rest are not listed, but will enjoy the coverage. They could be listed in the future, possibly. If they are, they're covered. So I think we have done a pretty comprehensive job of that. I'm not really concerned about that, actually, at all, because of the approach we're taking, habitat. We're protecting large habitat, that's the idea, not just the individual approach.
Thanks.
So kind of moving on, the EISEIR is final, responded to all the comments. The plan was found to be the environmentally superior alternative, there were no significant unavoidable impacts, and as such, no mitigation measures. Extreme amount of attention to conditions and avoidance of minimization that's included in the plan has essentially led to this, along with our large-scale approach to conservation biology that I've been talking about. So, next steps. I'm not presupposing anything here, okay? I really am not. I mean, but under the situation that you do actually make a decision at some point here, certify the EIR, then, and adopt the plan, then we go to the other plan partners. And we've been just pulling them on possible available dates, and none of these are cast in stone, but we'd go to Rancho Cordova, you know, there could be a possible date, early September, City of Galt, and then the connector JPA, and then on to the, finally, to the South Sacramento Conservation Agency would need to approve the plan. So those are things we see playing out over the next two to three months, but getting to the point then where we're at a stage to all complete, and the federal and state agencies issue their permit, complete their work, and we hope to have permits in place by the end of the calendar year. The goal here is really to be ready for the construction season in 2019. So we might have a little slippage, but if we can get close to that, we're still working hard, we're on that path. So that gets to the end, and I just want to say, I believe this is an extremely important, significant program for South Sacramento County, for the county in general. And the uniqueness of it can't be overemphasized in terms of the coordinated, that both that horizontal and vertical integration across the permitting agencies, as well as engaging with the stakeholders, first time. And I think it's really, will have tremendous benefits, both for the regulated community, the environmental interests and stakeholders, as well as for the landowner community, with some of these protections that don't exist today and the notification processes. And with that, I will close and say thank you very much for your time today, and happy to answer any questions. And we do have two other speakers, as mentioned.
Supervisor Natoli has questions. Would you like to now, or wait for the other speaker?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, Bill, while I was still up there, if I could. Thanks. Bill, I wanted to ask, first, thank you for your work and dedication to, you know, I think, doing your best and working with the team to be responsive to questions and concerns. I wanted to ask about the Safe Harbor Agreement and how that applies, and as you're well aware, because you've attended many of those meetings, those dozens and dozens of meetings, and some of the community concerns, we're certainly going to hear from the agricultural community, and we'll touch on that a little later, but as it relates to the agricultural residential communities, and whether it's Harold or Wilton, Galt, Clay, Slough House, areas, Point Pleasant, Franklin, communities that, a lot of them have long history as settlements, but obviously, in, over the course of the last, you know, many decades, I guess, certainly coming after World War II, have seen development that has allowed for additional lifestyle choices, relates to ag res, animal husbandry on smaller properties. And I know the concern, I certainly was, even you were there at the Casumnas Council when they acted upon this, you had several presentations there. I've heard from others about not only what plan impacts are, but how it would potentially impact individual properties. And again, larger agricultural, agricultural operations are one thing, but folks that may have five or 10 acres, or 20 acres, and either wish to continue doing what they're doing there, and preserves, these preserves interlace themselves between those areas. There's no question about it. In fact, I think the ag residential communities, in a number of cases, have served as buffers to some of the urbanization proposals over the years. I clearly recall my first few years on this board, there were proposals in the Wilton and Harold areas for AR1, AR2 subdivisions on hundreds of not, you know, 1,000 and more acres, and those communities were very, very concerned. And now those lands, in most cases, have gone into agricultural production, some in vineyards, some remain in row crops and other uses. So I guess my question is, is that if you could just take a moment to talk about, at least from your perspective, what it would mean, and what it means to agricultural residential property owners, residents, farmers, some of them farm on leased land, and also the Safe Harbor approach, and what that means, that may be more pertinent to larger agricultural operations that may have irrigated fields and other areas that interface with preserves. But I'd like to kind of have you give us your take on that anyway.
Okay, on the last part of that, I don't think, the Safe Harbor, Good Neighbor would also apply to those ag res areas. They could certainly be, you know, we're open to receiving applications.
Yeah, well, the Good Neighbor is one thing, but the Safe Harbor is actually, that takes a step further. A Good Neighbor allows for you to enter into a Safe Harbor, but kind of what that entails, because there is, as I think you've worked through, it's some opportunity for folks, if this plan were to be approved, to enter that.
Sure.
And explain, just take a minute to explain that, if you could.
Yeah, well, again, what they would get would be the protection against any incidental take from any activities that they're doing on their property, okay? That is to say, existing agricultural operations, be it small or even, you know, the larger ones, of course, we've talked about. But that's really what the Good Neighbor provides, all right? Secondly, we would not be looking for easements on those properties.
Right.
So from that standpoint, there's really no effect. Thirdly, should they wish to, you know, apply for changes on their property, zoning or otherwise, or whatever their operations are, this has no effect on that either, okay? So I think those three areas are really not, should not be an issue.
So there are no preserve setback requirements. Within the UDA, there are, but in the rural areas where predominantly the conservation is going to occur, so-
Correct.
If I'm in a five-acre parcel, and I got common fence line with a preserve or a conserve piece of property, and that responsibility, obviously, certainly under the current law, whatever that structure is, you have responsibility, but there's no additional onus upon the property owner to do anything different than what they'd be doing there-
That is correct.
-with or without the plan.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. That helps. I have some other question about agricultural pursuits and interface, but we'll take those up a little later on. Thanks.
Okay, next speaker.
Okay. I think it's Jennifer Norris from the Fish and Wildlife Service. Jennifer.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Members of the Board, Chairman Kennedy. Thank you so much for having me here. I am really excited to be here at this place at this time. We have been working on this plan, as you know, for a very long time, and when I arrived, around the time Bill started, all I heard was this will never get finished, this will never happen, it can't be done. And I'm really proud of the fact that we're here now at this stage. Bill really covered the benefits of this plan. I don't need to repeat that to you. I want to make myself available if you have questions. But I just want to emphasize, Fish and Wildlife Service is a fairly small agency. We don't have a lot of resources to do work, and we emphasize, we prioritize this because we really believed that it was an opportunity to demonstrate good government. It provides for what is a rare win-win, in my view. We have a plan that provides for streamlined permitting, sort of a one-stop shop for developers, an opportunity to come to one place, understand the rules, and get a streamlined permit in a timely manner. You don't see that very often. For the Corps of Engineers and the Fish and Wildlife Service to put their heads together and creatively develop one permitting strategy is really unprecedented, and I'm truly proud that we've made that happen. So I think for the development community, that allows for smart growth for you, and predictability for them, and an opportunity to move forward on projects that have been waiting, quite frankly, for a while. For the Fish and Wildlife Service's perspective, we get comprehensive conservation, as Bill talked about. We have an opportunity of confidence that these species will be protected in perpetuity. We don't have to worry about piecemeal projects that may or may not serve the species that we're responsible for. So we're really excited about this comprehensive program. And from a personal perspective, I'm excited because I think South Sacramento is really special, and I think this plan provides an incentive to maintain the rural character that makes that place what it is. And so when you go out on that landscape, it's going to look a lot like it looks now for a very long time, and I think that's something to be excited by. So I just want to encourage you to move forward. I really look forward to the opportunity to begin implementation with you very soon. I think it's a great plan, and I just want to offer you up myself for questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
That was too easy. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Evening.
It's always hard to follow up, Jennifer, she's really good at this stuff. I'm Mike Jewell, Chief of the Regulatory Division with the Corps of Engineers here in Sacramento, and Chairperson Kennedy, members of the Board. On behalf of Colonel David Ray, our commander, I want to thank you for the opportunity this evening to speak about the Corps' support for, and really interest in, the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. Among its many missions, including flood risk reduction, supporting our military in responding to disasters, the Corps is charged with regulating activities in waters of the United States under its regulatory program. For 40 years, the Corps has sought through its permit decisions under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act to balance economic development with the protection of important aquatic resources, like streams and wetlands. Achieving the balance between development and aquatic resources protection has been a real challenge for us since passage of the Clean Water Act. Because our authorities' rules and regulations are built around evaluating activities on an individual basis, our permit decisions sometimes inadequately account for other actions in the region that occur over time. As such, our review is generally limited to the merits of the individual activity and the characteristics of the project site at a point in time, without a consideration of the risks, trade-offs, and interactions among several activities and aquatic resources. In addition, while we have achieved no net loss of aquatic resources, some of our 404 decisions on individual activities may not have been consistent with the decisions of local agencies, as well as the requirements of other federal and state resource agencies in areas like mitigation. Since 2000- Since 2004, the Corps has been actively involved in the development of the South Sacramento HCP because of the many species to be conserved under the plan that are found in aquatic areas. We recognized early on the effort presented a unique opportunity for us to develop streamlined 404 permit processes that could work in concert with the HCP. We believed then, as we do now, that aligning our program requirements to the maximum extent possible, the HCP affords us the chance to evaluate activities in a coordinated manner on a regional level or over a longer period of time. Since then, we have worked closely with the county, pardon me, US Fish and Wildlife Service, and other resource agencies to help craft an effective and pragmatic HCP and a first-of-its-kind approach to 404 permits that allows for more efficient decision-making that is harmonized with that of local government, smarter protection of important aquatic resources, and greater assurances for the regulated public. Strongly aligned with the South SAC HCP, as well as County Aquatic Resource Program and Ordinance, our 404 permit strategy is nearly complete. The 404 permitting strategy is comprised of three permit types that authorize HCP-covered activities in a streamlined manner. The first, a programmatic general permit, relies on the county's proposed aquatic resource program and ordinance. The PGP will effectively defer to the county for making decisions for activities for up to two acres of impacts to aquatic resources, except in the Mather Core Recovery Area that Bill spoke of, where the limit is 1.5 acres. The primary requirement is for the county to report to the Corps periodically on those activities authorized under the PGP. The second type of 404 permit is a letter of permission. The LOP procedures will authorize covered activities to have more than two acres of impacts to aquatic resources with no upper limit, but they must not require an EIS under the National Environmental Policy Act. Among other efficiencies, the LOP procedures eliminate the need for public notice and rely on the HCP to address the vast majority of impact avoidance and minimization requirements for aquatic resources. In most cases, the Corps will issue an LOP for covered activity in 60 days or less. The final permit type, the abbreviated standard permit, will only be necessary for a very small number of covered activities that require an individual EIS under NEPA. While the process involves an environmental document and public input, the time to reach a permit decision will be greatly curtailed. There are several key elements about aligning our 404 permit processes with the South SAC HCP and the county's aquatic resource program and ordinance that I want to highlight. First, we will eliminate time-consuming steps in our normal 404 permit review procedures. We will rely on the HCP and its EIR/ EIS to address avoidance and minimization of aquatic resources on a regional level. We will rely on the county's review under the Aquatic Resource Program and the ordinance to protect aquatic resources. We will tier from the HCP EIR/ EIS to comply with NEPA requirements for individual activities. We will rely on the county's INLU fee program to compensate for impacts to species and aquatic resources. We will attain programmatic compliance with Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act. We will attain programmatic compliance with Section 401 of the Clean Water Act. And last, we will attain programmatic compliance with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. As a result of the alignment, the Corps' 404 permit strategy will result in faster, synchronized decision-making, better aquatic resource protection, and greater assurances for the public. Finally, I want to extend our gratitude for allowing us to be part of this important effort. We have been impressed by the ability of the county staff over the past five years to thoroughly seek stakeholder input, work with resource agencies, evaluate all options, resolve issues, and ultimately bring the HCP, the Aquatic Resources Program and Ordinance, and 404 permitting strategy to the finish line. Although it took longer than we all wanted to get here, this important effort reflects government at its best and assures a long-term, sustainable future for economic development and natural resource protection in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Frost, I believe, has another question. Mr. Jewell?
Yes, please.
I'm not sure if Mr. Jewell or Bill might be the question, person to ask. You talked about the county aquatic resource program and reporting and oversight from the county versus the JPA. And so it sounds like there's activities outside the JPA that the county has responsibility for. And I know that the county, the majority of the HCP is in the unincorporated county. And so I just wanted to make sure I understood, did I misunderstand? It sounded like the county might have separate responsibilities outside the JPA reporting or oversight.
Yeah, maybe I could jump in on that one. Well, the idea here is that all of the plan partners, permatees, will hold that permit in common, okay, both on the Endangered Species Act, and then, as Mike referenced, the programmatic permit under, under the Clean Water Act. So each entity, the county, City of Rancho Cordova, Galt, the JPA connector, County Water Agency, will hold those permits. So activities coming into the county, say, unincorporated county, will be handled, the permitting, by the county. Activities coming into Rancho Cordova will be handled by Rancho Cordova. The JPA actually is charged with the conservation side, the purchase of the easements and that sort of thing, making sure that the conservation program is being carried out. But the actual permitting for the development occurs at the local.
That entity.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we go to a public hearing, is there any other questions of Board members of staff on the presentation? Supervisor Natale?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly want to get to the public testimony, but I wanted to ask Leanne or remember her staff, maybe Bill as well, but in the comment letter from the Sacramento County Agricultural Commissioner last year, a number of items were outlined, but one of them, and certainly have, in reviewing the document, the environmental impact report, the determination that, and we're going to hear from some agricultural representatives this evening, that the conversion either of some of the crop lands to, maybe small portions to aquatic lands, but also then the restrictions that would, again, under a voluntary arrangement, but nonetheless still in perpetuity, be placed on crop lands, the target number being more than 9,000 acres in that Planning Unit 6, that we make the finding that there would be minor beneficial effects to agriculture. And I understand the calculation versus the no action, but I guess I'd like to maybe have someone take a stab at that as to how, how that was quantified, because the Agricultural Commissioner's letter, I think, very astutely said that it might have no net effect, it might have a positive effect, and it could have a negative effect, and particularly as related to limiting farmers, in perpetuity, ability to make decisions about the cropping because of the management plan and so forth, and the restrictions that would be placed via the conservation easement, and so the impacts in agricultural operations. So is that solely just based upon what might be acres that would otherwise be affected? Should there not be a plan, or was there more to it? And so I guess I would ask environmental staff, planning staff, take a, because I see that maybe being contrary to what we're going to hear from some of the folks who represent the farming interests generally this evening. So I guess I'd like to have you at least explain how we get to that finding.
Yeah, I mean, I believe our conclusion was based on the fact that you are preserving farmland, albeit with some level of crop restriction. It is still the preservation of land for farming, and that's why we reached that conclusion. So.
So to your point then, so it took into account that if you took another 9,000 acres over the term of the plan, and it already is in farming, that's the idea, this is crop land, it's not restricted relative to the rotation, to the types of crops, to moving with the marketplace, versus then having those placed under a conservation easement that gets credit, and we'll talk about this later this evening, under the general plan as relates to stacking for preservation of farmland, and I think there are some potential conflicts with that. So it accounts for that, that, you know, basically, the land is in productive farming right now, it's not restricted, it's not within the pathway of urban development, most of these lands are not, they're, you know, a lot of them are certainly on flat plains or in their areas that this county general plan has held for better part of probably 50 years or more in areas that are agriculture, they have, maybe have Williamson contracts on them. And you still, the finding still is that's a minor beneficial impact to agriculture generally.
Yeah, and again, I mean, we're looking at this as compared to the status quo, knowing that when development happens, it was going to be preserving this very similar easements and have the same mitigation requirements. So as we saw, we have 47,000 acres of preserve out there now, some of which has happened as a result of easements acquired due to the background mitigation that is happening. So we're, you know, comparing this plan against what would be happening otherwise without the plan.
Okay, but no project, Leanne, I guess, and this is, I just want to pursue this one question, but the no project would require, to the points being made in arguing for the certainty that goes with the plan, the understood mitigation ratios that are accepted by all the parties, would still require conservation, and they said easements, but I guess the assumption is that you'd have 900, 1,900 more acres would be impacted with development, and yet you wouldn't have some commensurate or maybe even higher mitigation ratios that would be done in the private marketplace, recognizing that that's, you know, not without its downsides as well. So I guess there was obviously some assumptions made, and that's what the basis is here, and I'm not necessarily challenging your assumptions, I just want to understand, because I think we're going to hear in a related context from folks, and I know I've heard, and probably other members of this board, from folks who are actively engaged in farming and/or certainly represent those entities, that those restrictions, certainly from a standpoint of the economic return, is important for farmers to sustain their operations, and if they can't move with the marketplace and are restricted from doing certain things, albeit it may have been sold under hospice of conservation easement, that that really detracts from, you know, I think the long-term viability of actually those farming operations. And you're looking at something.
Yes, and I'm also looking at some of the responses in our final EIR. We also looked at the fact that if we had higher ratios and under a status quo, urban development might actually be even shifted outside of the urban development area, because if you have higher ratios, particularly inside the Mather Core Recovery Area, and you're trying to achieve the same amount of development, you're going to have pressure, additional pressure put on the urban development area to expand that, under a status quo environment.
Okay, so the assumption is that the urban services boundary, which now has been in place for, you know, well over 20 years, and certainly.
If you were going to try to achieve the same amount of urban development.
The same amount of urban development, that's in the three jurisdictions, is that, so it takes Rancho Cordova and Galt?
Right, and you had to do higher mitigation ratios, particularly in the Mather Core Recovery Area, you would put additional pressure on the urban development area boundary.
But does that follow, though? Because then if you have higher mitigation ratios, you've got to get, put more land under conservation, again, willing seller, willing buyer in the marketplace, so how do you end up with more development and less mitigated acreage or conserved acreage?
Well, we were looking also at the, again, the Mather Core Recovery Area.
Okay, so this goes back to the Mather Core Recovery.
So it goes back to the fact that you have this hard boundary in the Mather Core Recovery Area, and if you had to do higher mitigation inside that Mather Core Recovery Area, that would be inside of a urban development area. And then in order to achieve the same amount of development, you'd have to look someplace else.
So that's a predominant factor in that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, otherwise, we'll come back to governance and some of the agricultural stuff later on, but I want to get to the public testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, we will start public testimony. I will read off the names. We've got quite a few, so in order to give the Board an opportunity to deliberate at any decent hour, we're going to limit speakers to two minutes. And when you come, just identify yourself, and the first speaker is John Hopkins.
Thank you, Chairman Kennedy and Board members. I'm John Hopkins, President of the Institute of Fetalogical Health. I've been involved in this plan from the very, very beginning, and I was Vice Chair of its Steering Committee, Steering Advisory Committee, and Chair of its Biological Subcommittee, entities that were very involved in preparing the plan and resolving conflicts. And as you've been hearing, it provides a unique opportunity to get away from the project-by-project approach to give us an area-wide approach. It's a compromise, providing the best solutions that we could reach by compromise to address the concerns of many stakeholders. One example that's been mentioned is the use of conservation easements outside the urban services boundary. Early on, we were thinking a more fee tidal, but it became clear that that was a huge problem for the agricultural community, so we kept almost entirely conservation easements outside the urban development boundary. The South County rural communities that Supervisor Natale mentioned, like Wilton and so forth, we realized that we should have no effect on them, we're just, we're not involved in those, we're not going to affect them, we're not helping them if they want to do development, but we're not affecting them. Inside the USB urban boundary, it was realized that we should restrict the amount of land protection to key vulnerable areas, and there was a lot of contention and negotiation of how big these areas should be, because every time you protect more acres inside the urban boundary, you are making more pressure outside. And then creek corridors, and that's why areas like west of Wac, there's nothing we want to protect, so there's no, it's not in a preserved planning unit. An example, I've got a few seconds. Samakine HCP has protected over 15,000 acres through easements. There is no opposition from individual farmers and ranchers, and the Vice Chair, the County Farm Bureau is an easement, has provided one of the easements. I seem to be out of time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Rob Berness?
Good evening, members of the Board. Rob Berness, and I'm representing the Environmental Council of Sacramento and Habitat 2020. We are here to wholeheartedly support the action that is before you today, the approval of a plan that has been over 20 years in the making. I want to emphasize that the Environmental Council of Sacramento has been involved in this process from the start, like John Altatura has been attending the meetings and the stakeholders' groups for 20 years. And at least for 12 years, Sean Worth has played a major role in the development of the plan, and it has, I think he's the only person that has read all the drafts at least once and the environmental document completely once. I don't know whether anybody even on staff can make that claim. In any event, they have helped contribute to many improvements of this plan that we support. I'd also like to give a shout out to Rich Rodamacher, who was hugely, hugely influential, helpful, and worked well with a wide variety of people in crafting the details of the plan. Regarding the concerns that rural interests have raised, I won't repeat the points that have been made, we agree with those. I would point out also that, and this may have been said, that actually, if you go back to the status quo, the current status quo, there will probably be more mitigation acres required, and that will, that will have impacts as well on the marketplace. And in addition, if we go back to the status quo, the development community will be essentially acquiring and putting forward their lands for mitigation, and that could have an adverse impact on small farmers who may not have the opportunity to benefit from the opportunity for conservation easements that they would have if this plan was put in place. So we join with other environmental groups, we join with the BIA in the chamber, we've submitted a letter, ECOS is a signee to that letter, it just didn't get on the draft that got to you.
We got the draft with it.
You got the practice.
We got the new version with the addition.
If you can wrap up.
A little technical area. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I had a question for Mr. Berness.
Supervisor Serna.
Rob?
Mr. Berness.
So back to the thematic line of my questioning here tonight, is there anything, knowing that ECOS has been a pretty vocal advocate about infill development versus greenfield development.
That would be true.
What's that?
That would be true.
So knowing that, is there anything in your estimation about the fact that places like South Oak Park are included in the boundary of the like South Oak Park are included in the boundary of the Habitat Plan that would make infill development any more difficult in those areas?
I don't think it would. I'm not, I'm not sure. Any development in that, in those areas would still have to mitigate for any loss of vernal pool or other habitat that would be covered.
But based on the first speaker's comments, it was pointed out that there's not any habitat there really to protect of that value, so-
They had habitat.
Yeah, right. So again, kind of begs the question, why is it even in there? So, but I wanted to, I wanted to ask sincerely about whether or not you thought as an infill advocate that there was any benefit or detriment to places like the urban parts of District 1 and District 2 that are included in the, in the plan?
I think, I don't think there's, I don't think it makes a difference. I don't think it would impact infillability. I think there's other factors regarding infill that are far more determining.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Chair and members of the board. My name's George Carpenter. I'm Vice President of Wind Communities. And I first want to reference a letter that we submitted with some of our frequent development partners, Lennar Communities and AKT Development, that was sent to you in advocating for approval of the HCP. I wanted to hit on a couple of points that, themes that you heard from speakers tonight. Leanne Moffett used the word certainty, Jennifer Norris used the word predictability, and Mike Jewell used the phrase greater assurances to the regulated community. And I want to talk to you about that from a developer's perspective. Our company buys real estate, we invest in it, we get entitlements on it, tentative maps, sometimes we amend conditions of approval, we take it through the full development stage. But if it doesn't have a 404 permit, it's very difficult to underwrite. It's very difficult to invest in certain properties because you don't know, if it has over a half acre of wetlands, which most properties in the South County, over 20 acres do, then you have to go through a 404 B1 alternatives analysis under the existing regulations. And it's looking at, you just don't know. And so if you can finally figure out that you can underwrite a particular property, you also learn that you have to build infrastructure, usually that's beyond what that property needs. That's, that's the kind of business that we're in. And so then that means you have to assess whether other properties around you can also attain the densities and development potential that they were previously identified, because you need to figure out whether those properties can reimburse you for the infrastructure that you've up fronted. And so with the HCP that's going to come, that's before you, we'll be able to assess the resources on the property, we'll be able to identify the mitigation, we'll be able to figure out whether it works or not, and then be able to make the investments. And so that's the kind of thing that we need, that predictability, that certainty, those assurances to help solve the housing crisis. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Good evening, Chairman Kennedy, members of the board. My name is Chris Smith, and I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to speak in support of the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. The Metro Chamber is for business. Our advocacy and programs are focused to support a connected region, prepare a ready workforce, elevate a vibrant community, and foster a strong business climate. We believe that the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan is a unique opportunity to bring streamlined approach to regulatory permitting, namely by combining the Clean Water Act and ESA. Sacramento has significantly increased in population in recent decades, and further growth is anticipated and necessary into our future. For our communities' economies to develop, business must have an environment that allows them to utilize their resources without the uncertainty and inefficiencies of overregulation. As growth in the region, we must be mindful and creative in mitigating environmental impacts. The current process for obtaining project permits vary from agency to agency and are handled on a project-by-project basis. This current process is inefficient, costly, unpredictable, and causes hindrances to the economic development of our region. It has also resulted in the piecemeal mitigation and fragmented conservation. The proposed South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan will help provide certainty for home builders and allow us to help fill the housing shortages that exist today. We respectfully request your support for the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Chair Kennedy and Board Members. Damon Conklin, Sacramento Regional Builders' Exchange, representing 1,100 commercial construction companies in the greater Sacramento region that operate in the public, private, and civil space. We want to echo the comments from the previous speakers. Our industry, as you can imagine, must overcome rather complex permitting and regulatory barriers on a day-to-day basis, and we welcome the HCP's proposal, which we believe would streamline and provide some predictability in the permitting process. We believe this proposal will be more transparent and predictable for local plans, housing, transportation, infrastructure projects, and that will create construction jobs, labor, income, and greater economic development output for the Sacramento region. For those reasons, we ask you to please support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Member of the Board. Charlotte Mitchell, I'm with the California Farmland Trust, who are a nonprofit organization working to protect farmland through conservation easement in basically the Central Valley, beginning in Sacramento and down to Madera Counties, primarily working with farmers who want to protect their lands for the next generation in the working landscape. We also help developers in local jurisdictions with farmland mitigation. I also just want to point out briefly, as it was stated earlier, Bill talked about the relationship potentially with the California Rangeland Trust. We also were engaged in that conversation as well, although we hold farmland conservation easements, which are very specific to the nature of supporting that threatened species called the farmer, and one that, that farmer can then have the flexibility and ability to provide the assurance that their land will be in the working landscape, that they can change crops and use crop protection services, which may or may not be limited, and habitat conservation easements. I wanted to focus here today on the General Plans AG5, which is a farmland mitigation policy that was adopted by the General Plan process some years ago. And it calls out for farmland mitigation, and I don't want this recognizing that the Habitat Conservation Plan does not go out and do farmland protection specifically, but I don't want that policy to be, get engulfed, forgotten about in the process of protecting habitat lands on agricultural lands. When we impact farmland in this county, those lands need to be mitigated for, for its farmland purposes. And we've called that out. My colleague from the Farm Bureau will be joining you, and will speak a little bit more specifically to that, but it's been called out in previous comment letters, in my capacity, over the 10 years of working on the HCP under the Farm Bureau, and specifically in sectors of the early beginnings of what we were negotiating on the stakeholder capacity. I don't want that to be forgotten about, how that interrelates in the General Plan, and the HCP, I think, is very important for farmland conservation. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Supervisor Nattoli.
Yes. Thank you, Charlotte. Just on that item, and I certainly had flagged it, as I mentioned earlier, as released to the General Plan, the, my understanding is, and very brief here, and I'll ask you a question in a moment, but is that under the General Plan, and we made, and obviously the Farm Bureau and others were involved in discussion, in our mitigation for farmlands of either statewide importance, prime farmland, local importance, unique farmlands, grazing lands, there are some ratios and some compensating factors for projects of a certain size, and then requirements that those mitigations be one-to-one, as I recall, for the most part. And I think where I see the connection here, I think what needs to be sorted out, and maybe this is one of the things that we need to come back with, is that this being a conservation plan, to your point about farmland conservation or preservation, and what was, I think, intended in the General Plan, and we probably need to have a fuller discussion about that, but then how we allow, and I think it's certainly permissive versus required, but I think the practice has been, and I talked with the Plan Director about this yesterday, to allow, one, for stacking, but to basically get the full mitigation value, and yet with that farmland, if it comes with a conservation easement, then it is, it has those constraints that are understood as a part of that agreement, and so it's, it's different. And if you want to just take a moment, again, to, the distinction then would be, under what you and the Trust do, would be that you would have farmland preserved, and I assume, and I heard Mr. Hopkins talk about Samhawkeen County, whether the acreage there, could you just take a, take a brief moment and explain kind of that distinction, and maybe how it works in Samhawkeen County, since that was referenced, relative to farmland mitigation, and maybe connected with the HCP, but true farmland mitigation, so?
So farmland conservation easements look a little different than a habitat conservation easement, depending upon the habitat type that is being required to be conserved. In our farmland conservation easement, really the only restriction, we're buying that development right. That parcel cannot be subdivided and sold for other non-agricultural uses, but they're not restricted in its capacity for farming, can change crops, use whatever, crop protection services, et cetera, that tend to be limited in a habitat conservation easement. A habitat conservation easement typically cannot be stacked with an agricultural conservation easement, because it limits that ability for that farmland conservation easement to function. It's, it's, it's not allowed under the written word of that easement. So, so the point that I want to make certain is that in the General Plan, at least when we worked on it several years ago, was to ensure that when we're impacting farmland from a negativity level, we're converting it to non-agricultural uses, that it's protected for its farmland value, not farmland slash Swenson Hawk, or Sand Hill Crane, or some other type of habitat type, which I think is going to be implied through this Habitat Conservation Plan. But farmland, when it's impacted for its farmland value, should be mitigated for its productive farmland. So in other jurisdictions in which we work, in our service area, there's other counties that are very astute to ensuring that if there is an impact to farmland, that there is a mitigation fee that is paid by the development community. Some of that is, does get transferred to us. We're able to go out and do those farmland mitigation projects for its farmland values. And it's not, in Samhawkeen County, it's not connected with their Habitat Conservation Plan, but it is through various cities and the county, and Samhawkeen has a very robust farmland mitigation program that allows us to work on those types of easements specifically.
Is it more blended, then? I mean, I could see where you certainly can get some value, but what you're saying, if it's farmland that's impacted, then that ought to be given that due consideration. If it's habitat and/or species that are impacted, then it ought to be considered. And there may be, again, my word, blended, that, you know, there may be some overlay, but to give full farmland credit for conservation easement is not how they may be doing in other jurisdictions. I guess this is something I want our staff to take a look at, and to come back again, in a context, you know, maybe not this evening, obviously, I mean, we've talked a little bit about it, but to me, it's significant. It may not have immediate impact on this plan, but I think on the conversation, and certainly as a relation to the agricultural industry, and true, the true intent, again, we've done not so much development under the 2011 General Plan, but obviously this contemplates for this plan, giving that certainty. I think with the farmland, answering this board, I would believe should explore that question. So I don't know, Leanne, or Bill, if you want to weigh in real quickly, and again, I don't want to interrupt the speakers, Mr. Chair, but this is an important point, so.
Well, yeah, just very quickly, Supervisor Nattoli, you did raise that. In the briefing on Monday, staff did send an email out that's posted online and forwarded Policy AG5 to the board members and to the public. It's not directly related to the HCP, per se. It's certainly indirectly caught up in this. This is a General Plan policy. And at the time, when the General Plan was adopted, it did state that if land was required to provide mitigation pursuant to county-endorsed or approved HCP, then the mitigation land could be provided in accordance with the HCP.
Could be, is a variable, could be.
Admittedly, we have sort of taken that as a policy, and we have, you know, in some of the master plans that we're moving forward with, we are assuming only a one-to-one, and not necessarily separate farmland versus habitat mitigation. So that is, if the board wants us to relook at that, then we would need that direction.
Could you give us a backdrop for a report back, would indicate where it has been applied since the General Plan, how much acreage may have, you know, been covered under that, and what the impacts would be? Obviously, there are others in the audience who may want to weigh on this, because it certainly has some fiscal impact. On the other hand, I mean, I think the intent was is to have full farmland preservation mitigation, and I guess as a subject of this board's, you know, further deliberation. But AG5 was, you know, embraced by the board at the time, and we spend a lot of time with community and certainly regulated community, folks that are in this audience, and certainly our staff on working that through. But, so practice thus far has been, I know we allow for stacking, we had that specific conversation, but as to full credit under the HCP, that's, it's a finer point, but it's an important one, because, you know, it goes to the fee calculation, I would believe, for what goes to the HCP, but also then for what the calculation that the developer or builder makes, and certainly from the standpoint of what farmland that would have no restrictions relative to what his crops could be, if that was what was being affected in the urban development that occurred over time.
Certainly, we could look into that. I mean, mostly what we've done is Swenson's Hawk. I don't know how much actual crop land, but we definitely try to work on it.
Good, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Liebig, and I'm the Executive Director for the Sacramento County Farm Bureau. Farm Bureau is a non-governmental, nonprofit grassroots organization with the purpose of protecting and promoting Sacramento County agriculture and the farmers and ranchers who contribute nearly $470 million in farm gate sales to a larger food and agricultural economy. The Sacramento County Farm Bureau has been engaged in the development of the SSHCP for over 20 years, and has provided numerous comments and many hours of stakeholder involvement during those years. It's been said tonight and in many of the stakeholder meetings, that these habitat easements and conservation easements are no different than what's currently being presented in other easement capacities. While these easements may make sense for some farmers and ranchers, particularly our rangeland members, any fast-tracked development, which this project has said is providing, puts agriculture in jeopardy in the long run. And it's important to note that habitat conservation does not equal farmland preservation, as seemed to be said symbiotically throughout most of the comments tonight and in meetings in the past. Specifically referenced tonight, Policy AG5 in the Sacramento County General Plan was established to mitigate for the impacts to farmland. However, as interpreted in the SSHCP, the objective of that policy is taken to mean mitigation for habitat impacts that just happens to have some incidental agriculture use as farmland or cropland. This does not satisfy Policy AG5, and development activities that impact farmland should be mitigated for solely in relation to the loss of farmland. Moreover, such application of it, Policy AG5 fails to fulfill the spirit of Policy AG5 in terms of land quality and productivity. The 50-year permit exceeds the county's general plan update 2030 by 20 years. As a result, the SSHCP becomes a de facto land use planning document by prejudging covered projects that have not been publicly vetted through the county's land use, normal land use planning process. Additionally, agriculture needs a seat at the decision-making table of this plan. Simply having agriculture represented at solely an advisory committee capacity is not enough to ensure adequate and thoughtful consideration of our limited agricultural farmland and ensuring that that's made a priority. Conservation of habitat and the preservation of farmland are two vastly different ideas and cannot be misrepresented as the same end goal in these development efforts. Farm Bureau is requesting that agriculture interests be represented at both the Implementation Committee and JPA Governing Board. Thank you, and I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.
Good evening, Supervisors. I've previously made comment in the form of a letter to the Supervisors last year, and I asked that be admitted for the record. There are just a few things that I'd like to bring up that are not really technically involved, as some of my other legal objections are. The first is that the County of Sacramento is a familiar government agency, or government body, to everybody who lives here, so is the County Planning Commission. If we were to cede powers for 50 years to a new JPA that takes away the ability for the public to participate with its known representatives in the planning process as it goes on, the County Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission have done a great job of doing long-term planning, but my second point I would raise is that budgeting this JPA 50 years into the future is a fool's errand. We've seen- We've seen budgeting on other local issues such as, uh, roads and infrastructure utterly fail and run out of money early, just in, in recent months, recent years. And none of, none of the assumptions can be taken seriously that far into the future. And third, I, I know there's been a lot of research and creativity that have gone into this project, and it's great as a, an educational document and as a policy document, and the County Board of Supervisors can follow all of these policies without ceding any of its power to the JPA. I think the Rancher Cordova is competent to govern itself, if there needs to be some integration, they can cede power back to the County of Sacramento. And if they don't do that, then we've got potential double representation of people voting for their local politicians in Rancher Cordova and GALT, also voting for County Boards and Supervisors, and being overrepresented with respect to their interests as compared to those of us who have interest in the, um, unincorporated counties. So, I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Fred Hedge.
I apologize for.
Hegi.
Hegi.
Just call him Fred.
My name is Fred Hegi, I'm, uh, with the Cassuna CPAC, and we voted unanimously to vote this down. We were disappointed that Rancher Marietta wasn't included in it. Charlotte covered most of the stuff. My concern mainly is you put up acreages, but you should put up population, because the largest population in Slough House, Wilton, Harold, around GALT is ag res. They have no ability to utilize any of this. If the larger landowners want to use it, that's fine and dandy, it'd be a good program. But it's, uh, they get a contract, they get money. We get nothing but a second, uh, layer of government on top of us, and then we also have a problem with the connotation that you live in a habitat area. So, anybody that needs to change a well and has to get a permit, wants to put a building up or something, there's no way that that can't be held against them, because this is perpetuity, not past your span, past these people's span. I have kids in the area, grandkids in the area, I don't want them to later on be burdened by something they get no benefit from. There are also lack in connecting the linkages, because a lot of those linkages are going through ag res, and then if they're not part of the program, is this going to be condemnation? The conserved areas so far in our county don't practice good fire protection to their neighbors, because they can't disc them or mow. They should be required to disc their fence lines so any fire that comes along doesn't go to the neighbors, or whatever. They should get together with the fire departments and allow them to do that. Deer Creek Hills is burned up last two years, many thousand acres, then they lose their money for grazing, because they don't have any. They burned up, uh, from Highway 16 to Gerber in there, because they have no protection, and not counting what it does to the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Stan Van Vleek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members, Stan Van Vleek, uh, representing Van Vleek Ranch, our family business by way of background. We've been in this area for over 160 years, specifically in Sacramento County for over 100 years. We are actually, uh, in favor of this, and it's hard to be able to part from our brethren in agriculture. Ironically, most of the issues and concerns they raise, we agree with. The difference in the reality on this, though, is respectfully with a cliche, the barn, the horse has left the barn, and that is, easements are already being done, they've been done for almost 20 years, and we see it happening now. The difference is, in the fundamental issue, is if we don't adopt this, what ends up happening is all the things that we've talked about, we don't have those protections. We have to work with the Fed, we have to work with the state, and their sympathy to issues that are directly related to this community, agriculture, it's not in their parameters to do that. Mr. Jewell is right, it's not part of their analysis. You're setting up a plan that allows that to happen. So, this fundamental issue we call easements, it's, they're here, and they've been here for a long time. So, the question is, what's the best way to do that? We realize this is our reality, so we've actually gone in and figured out how to adopt this. We've used this process now as part of the fundamental for us to expand. Our operation has expanded by almost three times in the last 20 years, and we've used easements as a tool to do that. Not only are we looking at it from that vantage, but we're also looking in the future, as more farmers and others use easements and they decide to put on their land, that land value, when they sell it, will come down to the true agricultural value. It won't be speculative. So, it'll probably drop by two-thirds the price, because they will receive that when they enter into the easement. That means new farmers, other farmers can continue to acquire land at that value. So, we had asked that you support this, because it actually allows us to keep doing. I would agree with the Farm Bureau, though, again, listen to what they're saying, these ag issues need to be brought into consideration, but this is the right vehicle to do it, because there is no vehicle otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Alexandra Rigan.
Hello, I'm Alexandra Rigan, and I am here on behalf of the Environmental Council of Sacramento, or ECOS, and, uh, we have supported this for a long time, as you've already heard tonight, but I think I just want to point out mainly our, the fact that our letter includes an alliance with the Builder, Building Industry Association, Friends of Swenson's Hawk, the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce, who you heard from, the Sacramento Area Creeks Council, the Institute for Ecological Health, Habitat 2020, the Sierra Club, and, uh, who, the only one there who wasn't assigned onto a letter, but also supports is the Sacramento B Editorial Board, as presented in their article earlier, earlier this week, all in support of the Sacramento, uh, South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. Of course, there are many others in support of this plan, um, such as Van Vleek Ranch, you just heard from him. However, I think the variety of missions held by the nine groups named in our letter that have come together to support this plan, especially as it includes both builders and business interests, it is not one to be taken lightly. We stand united before you this evening for the sake of clarity for developers and as well for the preservation of natural environments for future generations and the health of our local ecosystems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Olga Shireli.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and the members of the board. My name is Olga Shireli, I'm representing K. Hovnanian Homes, Planning and Entitlements. Um, I'm here to ask you today to adopt South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan and certify its AIR. We believe this is a great plan that will, that's certainly been in works for 20 years, and this is the first plan that is supported not just by the development community, but also by environmental, uh, community and regulatory agencies. We believe that the plan will limit, uh, state and federal agencies' involvement in the land use and allowing, you know, local use control to stay local, um, bring certainty to development process and provide streamlined permitting, uh, which translates into so much needed housing on timely basis that is affordable for broader population. Please adopt this habitat conservation plan in a timely manner so that in-pipe projects can be processed, approved, financed, and constructed, uh, without any delay. One of the things that we want to point it out that it's great is orderly mitigation, preservation, and preservation of sensitive habitat lands, um, supporting connectivity and limited fragmentation in age effects, um, will definitely help to preserve lands held so dear by so many groups. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chrisanne Giles.
Thank you, Chair Kennedy, Directors. My name is Chrisanne Giles, I'm the Executive Director of Policy and Initiatives for the North State Building Industry Association. The BIA supports the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan before you for consideration this evening. Home builders have numerous state and federal agencies that we have to navigate for wetland and endangered species, and this habitat conservation plan will enable a greater degree of local control and planning efficiency. The BIA has worked closely with the federal agencies on local and regional planning that conforms to this habitat conservation strategy. Indeed, there are already many housing projects and several key transportation projects in Sacramento County that planned on use, using the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan to offset their environmental impacts. While there will always be challenges for the federal and local permitting process, the HCP will offer future projects in Sacramento an opportunity to buy mitigation lands that will facilitate much-needed growth in areas envisioned in the Sacramento County's general plan. As was mentioned earlier, it's not often that the environmental community and the business community come together to support a program that minimizes the potential conflict and provides greater transparency and predictability to local economic development, housing, and infrastructure. We urge you to adopt the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Shattick.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, I'm Bob Shattick with Shattick Community Planning. I support the South SAC HCP because it increases local control in three important areas: conservation, implementation of local plans and policy, and timing of needed traffic and infrastructure improvements. In the interest of time, I'm just going to focus on the implementation of local plans and policies. The County General Plan, and for that matter, SECOG's Sustainable Community Strategy relies on the, uh, the build-out of existing plan areas in the county, but under current federal regulations, you really don't have control of that. Just because you approve a plan doesn't mean we can build it. Current implementation of the Clean Water Act and the Endangered Species Act, uh, requires a duplicative process based on federal regulations and federal environmental review. The agencies do their best to consider local plans and policies, but frankly, the regulations really don't allow much deference to local planning, no matter how robust. And as a result, the agencies often do not permit projects as approved by the county. They may decide that a project simply can't be built, uh, in the location that's proposed, that's pretty rare. But they may decide that it needs to be modified in very significant ways, that's pretty common. And the bottom line is that their decisions trump yours. The federal agencies effectively have veto power over local land use decisions by virtue of the existing regulations, and as a result, implementations of approved specific plans, infrastructure plans, and finance plans are somewhat speculative and beyond your control. Adoption of HCP will decrease the federal involvement in the day-to-day land use decisions, and it allows much better coordination with local plans and policies. So, I encourage you to adopt the HCP, because I think more local control's a good thing.
Thank you. Well, there's all the cards I have from members of the public. Is there anyone else who didn't have an opportunity to fill out a card that would like to speak? Then we will take it back to the board. Supervisor Nastoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, well, first I want to thank all the speakers, commented, certainly all the folks that participated in this, and appreciate the, I think, the thought that's gone into the comments. Obviously, two minutes is tough to, to, you know, work in your thoughts oftentimes, but I think people are very clear and certainly appreciate the, um, many positive comments this evening. I wanted to, to, if I could, Mr. Chair, just turn to our staff, because I, I know that we, um, in briefings yesterday, there were some issues raised, and, and, uh, I think one that I've touched upon already, and that is the relationship to our general plan, and I think I've touched on that enough to indicate that I think we need to have some further discussion in this board about that, and I would, we have some more information that would help inform us about that, and the relationship to what we have before us this evening, obviously, is that, uh, practice has been thus far, the planning department, that the could has been applied to, apparently that it is, uh, used as mitigation coverage for loss of farmland, and, uh, I think that it needs to be visited, certainly with this current makeup of this board, those of us that were here during the general plan update that spent some time talking about that. I think stacking is appropriate in, in, uh, in many cases, but may not when it comes to the loss of cropland and other things we want to parse out, so I would ask for that. But I want to just focus a moment, because I think a, a real, um, important piece in this, and maybe it goes back to what Bob Shattick said in concluding about local control, and I think, um, the representation as it relates to, um, the interest, and again, there's been many interests, obviously, and we hear many of those folks come together this evening in support of what's before us, but the governance, in my view, is, is critical. 50 years for a permit and obviously decisions that will affect land use, not only on the development side, uh, all likelihood in perpetuity, but certainly on the, uh, conservation and mitigation side in perpetuity, and that's a long, long time. And so, I think that in, in, in light of that, and, and be very serious about that when I say that, I think that we need to have some more discussion as a board about the governance structure, and, uh, some of this has come out of, obviously, the comments we've heard this evening that were echoed this evening, but, uh, our Farm Bureau Director on behalf of that organization, that represents many of the farming and ranching interests in this county, and many of them are multi-generational, like Stan Van Vleek and, and others, um, that is key, uh, not only key from the standpoint of, uh, their participation in, in public processes that are, you know, built into, uh, Chapter 9, but I think key to the success. Uh, if you, I think, imagine that what we want is certainly this, uh, matrix under the plan of interconnected, uh, habitats that provide, uh, the, um, opportunity for species to flourish, then I think as a part of that, both the residents, and I think Mr. Hegi talked about this, uh, but also obviously the farmers, who many times, most times are residents, uh, and those, not only the compatibility, but their representation. And so, uh, I want to maybe, and maybe look to Mr. Gill and certainly to Ms. Moffett on this, but I think from purposes of, of returning this board, uh, in, in fairly short order, I'd like to have some more conversation about the makeup of the JPA. And having given this thought, uh, again, we certainly had, uh, a structure that's been outlined, that obviously has been agreed to, uh, in advance of any plan adoption, but in looking at where the mitigation lands are and will be over time, outside the, the urban development areas, where the three jurisdictions and the two other agency permities, I think it's important to look at, uh, and to reflect on, long-term, over the 50-year permit, the Board of Supervisors that represent all, currently a million and a half people in this county, we were elected by five districts, we have, uh, shared that responsibility under the arrangement thus far as, as, as adopted, but are approved anyway, uh, and I think that, um, we need to take a look at that. For matters that would affect our general plan, i.e. the urban services boundary and for some other matters that relate to, um, things that are in, in, in adopted policy comport with state and federal law a lot, we require a supermajority. And I guess I'm going to ask that, and again, we'll have to, you know, our plan partners represent here this evening, and I'd like to thank Mayor Hewer for being here from GALT and, uh, representatives from Rancher Cordova and obviously the Connector and Water Agency. I, I think we need to look, take a look at that makeup. It currently has six members, there's a voting structure that goes behind that, it's explained in the, in the Chapter 9, uh, but I think it's a policy question for this board and for our colleagues on the other, um, elected bodies from the municipalities, but I think it's important that we take a look at it, and I'm going to suggest, uh, that we take a look at, uh, that makeup and, and, uh, have some staff work done around, uh, expanding the Board of Supervisor representation to four on that body. And I think part of that is looking at the long-term, uh, aspects of the plan, and the fact that, uh, no matter how you cut it, under the current structure, there will be a more urban bent, uh, to the makeup, just by virtue where folks are elected from, and it will serve on that body, and I think that this board, because we, our general plan is the one that, uh, in large part, will continue to have to preserve and conserve lands, both for agriculture, but certainly for the conservation strategies here, I think it's important to at least have that conversation before we embark on this, and so I offer that as one piece of my comments. The other part relates to agricultural representation, and, uh, I've been given the good fortune to represent much of the agricultural lands in the county and much of the plan area that's affected, certainly outside the urban development area. I share some of that with Supervisor Frost, some with Supervisor Kennedy and, and Cerna, but I have the preponderance of that in, uh, in thinking about this, both at the JPA level, but certainly at the Implementation Committee. And having read that, Chapter 9... And having read that Chapter Nine, I get it that, you know, there's a lot of detail there, but the JPA has the ability to delegate to the Implementation Committee a lot of the duties that are embedded here, or to the Executive Director. And I'm going to ask, as a part of a report back, that we have some discussion about how we might actually embed agriculture representation on that Implementation Committee. Now, I don't have the answer to that, and there may be some objections from other affected parties, but I think it's key. If we're going to have that relationship as it relates to streamlined certainty for development and public works projects and for the things that are covered, having the assurances that the environmental community regulators need as it relates to the conservation strategies and the approaches and staying ahead of that, and all the mechanisms that go behind that, agriculture and agricultural lands and lands that are related to those communities are critical, and I think agricultural representation is key. And I could even make the distinction between those who may represent their cropland interests versus those that are range land interests, but I think we'd leave that to the, to our farm organizations, and Sacramento County Farm Bureau's been around this county for 100 years, and I'm sure has weighed in over the generations before this board on many matters. I respect their opinions. I do those of the building industry and the chamber and the environmental representation, but I think that's key. If we're going to have a successful plan over time, and for each county, it's different. I've seen what Sam Keen's done. I've heard information about Yellow, which recently adopted their plan. And so I'd like to have a report about how that might occur, and again, for our, at least, the conversation here and discussion. And then also, I know that there's a TAC, and there's the, there's IRT, RTR Committee, whatever it is, and I think representation there. Obviously, others are invited to the table there, but that whole thing about local control, and I know that in some of the other venues in which we talk about state actions and federal actions, you know, we want a seat at the table, and I think it's very important, and again, I certainly would be open even to, you know, a broader discussion if that became so critical, but I believe very strongly that for this plan to be successful, more successful than it would be as is envisioned, that I think that representation is key and critical over the next 50 years. And electeds will, will come and go and do their job in representing the folks that, from the jurisdictions they represent, but I think agriculture, if it's going to be here to stay, they need to be represented in this conservation process in a way that's meaningful, that gives them not just a voice, but also an ability to be represented in a way that that voice is given not only due consideration, but I think meaningful consideration, and part of that is having that seat at the table. And so I'm going to ask that as a part of a report back, and I've talked with Nav and Leanne about this, and I certainly would welcome the comments of my colleagues, but to me, that's really key. It's key for a lot of different reasons, but because all, for all the support this has, you know, there is still nervousness and concern and legitimate concern within the realm of the agricultural community. And in fact, that's where the conservation is going to occur, is in those agricultural areas of the county. And I think that one of the ways to break down some of those barriers over time and hopefully build confidence, I don't necessarily expect support, but confidence is to give people a seat at the table and ask for their meaningful participation and give them a meaningful voice. And so that's what I'd like to have a discussion when we return on this matter, when we put this over this evening, and again, certainly engage the stakeholders here who brought this to it. It, to me, is key and critical to the success of this plan long-term. So that's my comments. And I don't know if there's any response from Nav or Leanne before, but do you think you could accomplish that task and bring us some information relative to those?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Cerna.
Thank you. So first, I just want to reiterate my thanks to our staff and our consulting team and legal counsel who have worked for decades on this to get us to this point, and I'm feeling like we're pretty darned close to the finish line. But with that said, I think, given what Supervisor Natale just articulated, clearly for me at least, I don't see why we should not have a more robust discussion on the items that he mentions, especially those related to governance. And I do, since we are going to, appears we may be coming back for another chance to have a further discussion and hopefully a vote as to our disposition on this. I would like to have an answer to my questions that I've been asking all night about the, about the geography of the plan, again, just to understand it a little bit better. But I, but I am prepared certainly to, to support, if a motion is made later to continue this to a date certain, with staff certainly nodding their head yes, that they clearly understand what it is that Supervisor Natale has just spelled out will be the subject of discussion at a, at a future meeting, so we don't keep on having subsequent hearings because there's not complete information on the subjects we asked you to, to brief us on. I'm prepared to support that at the right time.
Supervisor Frost.
I just came into this picture pretty late, and when I got those binders, I was a little bit overwhelmed. It was seven or eight binders, about eight inches high, and I know there's a lot of work that went into it, and so I want to thank all the experts for all your contributions to it and all of you who helped me try to come up to speed with the HCP. I went to the consumeness, one of the consumeness CPAC meetings. I know there were several, and I've had conversations with some of the community members who were concerned about property rights and how this is going to impact the agriculture community. And I, and so my first, I guess I better, I need to better understand the issue of stacking and extra mitigation for loss of farmland, because what I was seeing from my perspective was that the HCP is bringing some opportunities to the ag community for some of the farmers. In fact, Supervisor Natale and I were just out on a tour of a couple of the farms and had some conversations regarding the, the challenges that they're having with qualified workers, future generations to carry on farming, and how they're going to deal with all the water issues in the Delta, the water fix. They have numerous challenges to their, to agriculture in our region, and I guess I might be misunderstanding it, but I kind of saw this as another opportunity for the agriculture community to perhaps even augment some, you know, capitalize on the easement opportunity in order to either grow their business or lower their costs to a point where they could sell their farm to some, some young farmer who's maybe not part of their family, but they don't have someone in their family that wants to carry on farming, who wants to buy a farm, and would just love to have that opportunity to make that affordable. So I think there's, you know, I guess I, I want to better understand how that, how agriculture, is agriculture benefiting from, I, yeah, I thought agriculture was benefiting. So I know there's concerns about property rights also, and I've studied about, you know, I asked the question to every legal counsel that I came across. I said, is there any property right, or, you know, is there any law that, that we're adding to what's already there that's going to impact their property rights further than what they've already been impacted? And my understanding is the only difference between having this HCP and not having it is we actually have a local conversation and we have local control over how we're going to manage habitat conservation, and we can actually do it more expeditiously. So I see this as a wonderful opportunity, and I'm excited about it. I did have some questions regarding governance also, like Supervisor Natale. My question regarding the governance was specific to, most of the habitat conservation is in the unincorporated county, and the unincorporated county is the one who ends up after all those years with this. And so while those 50 years are progressing forward, we have growing city, other growing cities making decisions around the unincorporated county, and how does that impact the county? So I would like to understand that and how the board, the makeup of the board and the, you know, I guess the, the percentage of representation from each entity and how, how that's going to work. And I'm, I'm very much in favor of having, including the agriculture community. I think they should be included. They can inform us in a way from a different, give us a better perspective of their needs. And so I think it's important to keep them in the conversation, and I'm very open to the, to those conversations. And so those are kind of the, that's really all. I'm, I'm in favor of supporting Supervisor Natale's request to move forward, and I, and I also agree with Supervisor Cerna that we should have a, you know, try to have a deadline of how, when we're going to, how we're, how this is going to play out, so we have a timeline that we're going to work toward to keep us on task, so we don't go another 10 years. Thank you.
All right, any others?
I have a few comments to make. First, I too want to thank not only our staff, but Mr. Zebraun, Ms. Myra Bratmiller, Mr. Endicott. I've heard nothing but great things about the, the community outreach that was done on this, and greatly appreciated. I think this has been well-vetted. I actually came here today, and I still feel this way, to, you know, thinking I want to have this thing done. It's been 20 years. I've only been involved with it four, but pretty extensively. I've had many, many briefings, many conversations, even over the governance, specifically, I think. Four years ago, Mr. Zebraun and I started talking about it, and it's morphed and changed over the years, and the proposals have been different. I think where it's landed, it has landed in a pretty good place, particularly, I mean, it's somewhat typical of most of the JPAs that are out there, with one difference, and that's that the Technical Advisory Committee actually includes agencies, partners, and stakeholders. That's fairly unusual. I think that does give, that gives more voice to the stakeholders than just about any JPA that I can think of. I may be wrong, but, you know, we serve on a lot of them. So, you know, I, I don't have a tremendous amount of heartburn over the, the governance piece. I do think that it's, it is probably one of the only times I've seen such desperate parties come together, from the building community, the business community, the environmental community. I've never seen this. And then, and then I was reminded, and somebody who used to dabble a bit in land use, you know, when I see the federal agencies, federal and state agencies get up at the podium and say they agree, I'm like, this is like, it's nothing I've never thought I'd see before. So I actually, I am prepared to support this. However, I'm not a smart man, but I can count. So I, what I do want is if there is a motion that this should be continued, I would like to determine tonight when that will be continued, too. I would like that to be as soon as staff can come up with whatever answers need to be arrived upon. I also don't want to leave here today unless I have a clear understanding that staff is crystal clear on what it is that you're to be looking at. So as Supervisor Cerna said, we don't have to do this again and again. And then at the next hearing, should there be one, I really intend to focus that discussion on those issues. I don't intend to rehash 20 years of history again. So with that, if there's a motion, I'd be glad.
I'm prepared to move this, I think, to September 25th in the afternoon. Is that, is this a few weeks to work on this?
September 25th, 2:00 p.m.
All right. Mr. Cerna.
Thank you. Is there, do we have the ability to actually schedule it sooner? And the only reason I mention that is there's a strong likelihood I will not be able to be part of the hearing that night.
That would be problematic.
We could go with the 11th, yeah.
September 11th, 2:30 p.m.
Okay.
Does that, does that give you guys enough time?
Yep, we'll make it happen.
I'm just going to ask the question. I appreciate the ability to get back quickly, and that's, you know, a month off, but I think there's work with some of the plan partners and others. I think those conversations need to occur. Maybe you can do all that. And put together a staff report that then has discussion about general plan policy and governance, you know, not just related to my comment, but obviously this board, and so I guess I'm curious, because you do the staff reports two weeks in advance or a week in advance, and so you basically got two weeks and a few days to pull this together to put it in a staff report. Is that right? Am I right or wrong? I mean, I'm just.
Staff report will be, it'll be one week out. Staff report will have to be out on September 5th or 6th. It gives us about three weeks. If we can't make that time, we're running into more issues. We can always put it for that date and continue to another date.
We are, we are talking about some pretty specific areas here.
Correct. I mean, there's two specifics.
Right.
Governance and the ag, what's the number?
AG5.
AG5.
Yeah, agricultural preservation.
Those are two.
Right.
If the board's comfortable, let us schedule for the 11th. If it looks like we're not going to make that date, realizing 25th's not available, we'll continue to another date.
Go one more week.
But that will be, we will continue working this to get to you as quickly as possible.
Are we in the week of October 2nd? Are we in that week?
No, it's October 16th after that.
Okay.
All right.
Just to be clear with expectations, any change in governance structure would have to be acted upon by the board and the other bodies also.
Understood.
Right, but, but our plan approval, approval of EIR is critical to the equation, so if there's desire for us to engage in that conversation, you're right, it has to go back to, I understand that.
No, we, we understand that piece.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, then I would move that we continue this to August 11th at 2:30 p.m.
September 11th. We can't meet that one.
Well, you didn't hear the year. I was going to say 2019.
I second that, man.
I was going to say 2019, so you guys all got ahead of me, you know? Let me put the year in there. All right, September 11th, 2:30.
Second.
2018.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, with that, we have item number two. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you for your brevity and your comments, and thank you for helping us come to a non-decision. We have county executive comments.
No comments.
Thank you, sir. Supervisors? We're adjourned.